Order, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks for coming, everybody. Hope everyone's getting used to the time change. And it's been nice getting used to the great weather we've been having. I'll start off by doing a roll call. I'll do it myself. Cindy Valentine, excused, absent. Crystal Reagan, excused, absent. Or absent, excuse, I should say. Kristi Hiltonan?
Here.
Artie Bryson, here. Joanne Shirkey, excused, absent, excuse. Maureen Bowery?
Here.
And Mark Bouchard?
Here.
All right, we have four people and that is a quorum. So, roll call. I'm gonna be taking notes as I go. First on the agenda is bills payable. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve bills payable in the amount of $116,239.30.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have support?
I'll support it.
All right, any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call. Kristi?
Yes.
Artie, yes. Maureen?
Yes.
And Mark?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Next, we have our supervisors' report. I've been doing a lot with sewer interceptor project, trying to secure those funds. We did receive a million-dollar earmark from the federal government on that and a lot of work pulling that together right now. And then establishing a wastewater treatment plant authority. Pearl Beach Pier Spark Grant projects and a few other things are probably been on the list that aren't in here. But the Spark Grant application did open up this past week and I attended two webinars on it and will be, I'll actually probably be starting tomorrow, hopefully, putting all the documentation and all the support letters for applying for this grant. Met with all the employees last week with the wastewater treatment plant and, you know, thank God they all want to stay there and we had a very good talk. And they really aren't, they're happy the way things are. We're gonna tweak, make a few changes. How this is gonna work, when the authority takes them over, basically they're gonna be fired from the county and rehired from the, by the authority. And, you know, I've told them, you know, they're gonna keep their seniority and everything else status quo, so put them the ease there and we had great discussion. We're gonna be, and I am getting quotes for benefits for them right now. And we'll be looking for some, a local bookkeeper to help the new authority on, you know, cutting checks and payroll and day-to-day stuff. I gotta put an RFQ out on that. I did accept the original quote from Zimmer Roofing. We were asked, or I was directed to get a quote to do a tear off and replace and that price was actually $40,000 more than the original quote and it was more than the board allowed me to spend. So we accepted the original quote and they ordered the material and when it comes in, we're gonna put a new roof where the tree fell on it. Lots of stuff going on with building and zoning that, as you probably noticed, the Big River Grill was tore down and thankfully, we did actually went to court to get a court action against that. And we did have a consent agenda that if it wasn't tore down by November 1, that the township would go there and actually tear it down and build a property owner. But thank, well, thank God that, you know, they started on Halloween, the last day. So I was glad to see that happen. So that's a big job. Oh, they're still working on it. I did file for a $3,000 grant for collecting our tire, scrap tires at our cleanup and seemed pretty favorable. And actually spent a lot of time working on solutions for septic for the downtown Sans Souci, looking at options and new technology and things that the Health Department and the Eagle will allow us and won't allow us. So been actually spending a lot of time on that. I don't know if you noticed, but the parking lot out here was striped. Jerry's Asphalt did it for free for us. So thank you, Jerry. Job well done. Still waiting on the state as far as, they're supposed to put out maps for broadband expansion and they haven't yet. I don't know, originally they said they were gonna be out a couple, three months ago. I kinda figured it wouldn't, but they didn't disappoint me. And actually I made a new contact and we've been working with Merritt Networks, who also specializes in broadband expansion. We have about three, four miles in Clay Township that doesn't have broadband. So we're working on that. Tended the Michigan Township Association Men and Conference last week. It was up in Port Huron. Lasted two days. It was, it was actually really good. It's been a long time since we've been able to get together. Made some new contacts and received a lot of new updated information. A lot going on at the state level. Things after tomorrow, after the election goes in the lame duck and things always move fast in lame duck. And I was told that they will probably pass a short-term rental act and they are actually looking at ours, Clay Township, as a model for it. A couple of them reached out to me and they actually told me that, a couple state senators, so. Did a security upgrade on our firewall this past week, so I'm sure that we're safer from all the bad things out there trying to attack our network. And looking at replacing our generator that goes between the hall, the township office and the police. We're gonna probably look at doing something with the DDA there. I do have a DDA meeting Wednesday, so we'll know more then. Met with Elginak on the water plant. The new filters and blocks are installed. That went well. Waiting on low-service pump, the VFT, the variable flow, D, D, what's D? I'm having a moment. VFD.
Variable frequency drive.
Drive, that's it, okay. And they're waiting on that for the low-service pump two. It was ordered back in May, in April and they still haven't received it. And also the upgrades on the SCADA system and air compressor, number three motor is, they're waiting on that to be rebuilt. So it's like hurry up and wait on a lot of this stuff. Actually, today I had a great day. Working with fifth grade, Nikki Dagowski's, fifth grade class, they approached me. There's a, behind Millside in, or actually Algonquin Middle School, in the woods, there's a outdoor classroom and it's been neglected. And plus, there's a trail system, probably a mile and a half or so trails back there. And they asked me if we could help. We're gonna make a community project out of this. We're gonna redo the outdoor classroom so they can hold classes out there. And the trail needs help. We're gonna have to get some chainsaws out there and cut and move a lot of big trees that fell and do a lot of sprucing up. They have a lot of trail signs that need to be replaced or refurbished. And it's gonna be a really cool project. We're gonna make it a community effort. I know Elginak Rotaries already wants to get involved and, and we reached out to Waterfowl USA. Just coincidentally, right after I talked to them, I met with DNR on another, on another issue. And they are going to send a botanist in to talk to the class and we'll take them out there and ID a bunch of plants and trees and stuff and we'll be able to put some signage out on that. And then we had the idea of making a storybook trail, where they take a book and we'll put it in several different stations along the trail and you actually read the book while you're walking the trail. And we'll let the class pick what book and we'll change it out every year, so. Think that's gonna be a pretty cool project. But yeah, that's gonna come together. Been doing, excuse me, been doing a lot of research on grant opportunities to take advantage in the future. There's a lot of them out there right now. Some really don't apply and some do. Met with Sturgis for Tomorrow people last week. We combined the Sturgeon Festival with our Scarecrow Festival and it went really well. And we just did a recap of that and how we can make it better going forward and keep that relationship. And the official next year's Sturgeon Festival or tournament is September 23, 2023. And we got a lot of good ideas on improving that. This past year, they had 35 boats. What was the number, 118? They boated 118 fish in one night. They started at night and they went to the morning. So it's a pretty cool tournament. We get a lot of people from out of town that come to fish that. And that, then they told me, they actually caught someone poaching a sturgeon at the state park. And he, he feels sorry about it now, I'm sure. So he's gonna cost him some money. Well, that's my supervisor's report. From that, we'll go to public comments. Do we have any public comments? Don't fight over it.
Good evening. Christine Holcomb, Gore Drive, Hurson's Island, current vice chair of Planning Commission. I just wanted to make sure that you all had received my email requesting reappointment. I sent that on Monday, the 17th of October. And then Cindy had sent one to Robert, Chris Daggy and I to make sure that we knew we needed to notify you, Artie. And I verified that with Cindy to make sure that it went through. My email comes through a little weird.
Yeah. I didn't see it and you'll be on the next meeting's agenda.
Okay, I appreciate that. Okay, just wanna make sure. Thank you all.
Thank you, Christine, for your service.
Hi, Dan Newman, Middle Channel Drive. Two meetings ago, you kind of, Artie, you did, I'm sure just that the Middle Channel is gonna be paved, not throwing a bunch of stones on it. What happened?
Well, it was paved. It's not a township road. It's a St. Clair County Road Commission road and it's their project. And, you know, I, if you have any questions, I'd just have to defer you to them.
Okay. What's your last words when we were?
Yeah, and they did finish it. I don't know what the scope is and they're, they're looking at doing a couple different things. As you recall, the last time it was done, it was a big mess because there was a lot of tar that got on cars and it was, it was a big debacle. And so I wasn't, or they, they're kinda waiting if they're gonna do this last application or not because their fear of doing the last application will, will put tar on everyone's car again. So that's why they're waiting.
Seriously?
Seriously. It's not my, it's not our?
I, I realize that, Artie, but you know what? We live, I live in Clay Township, right on Hurson's Island, on Middle Channel Drive. And when I purchased the house 25 years ago, you know, the road was paved and that's what we expected to be paved.
Yeah, it's paved now, too.
It's not, that's, that's not, that's not paved, Artie. You, you know, you can use the words what you want.
Well, it, how it works is it gets compact.
That's not paved.
It's the same surface that was on it that they did eight, nine years ago. It was the same surface that they did 20 years ago.
No, no, it's not the same as it was 20 years.
Well, call, call the road commission. They'll, they'll disagree with you.
I have a comment on that. So what you're seeing, you know, I may be wrong, but I think it's just the first layer and something else is to come on that because they did the same thing exactly end up on Meisner Road. Looked like that. It was asphalt and then three months later it was blacked out. Well, yeah, they did that, too. They actually put things in the road, so.
Any other public comments?
Sharon Newman, 4460 Middle Channel. I just wondered if we made any headway on getting an alarm system at the ferry for the EMT and emergencies because of the things that have happened on the island, the lack of communication, the ferry people being asleep and houses are burned down. And I still have opened wires above my house and I'm still battling with Michigan Public Secret, Michigan Public Service Commission and DTE. Do we have an alarm? I can't believe there is not some kind of an alarm system.
Yes, there is. And it was done right after that incident in 2019. We have a cellular alarm, cellular phone, and they have a radio that can talk to the, if they're in the channy, from dispatch right to the channy. And that was put in place right after that event in 2019. And to my knowledge, there has not been another issue like that since. And there's probably been 300, 400 calls over there.
No, I heard just the burn down in August, the call didn't get through.
Not true.
I have friends that were at the ferry at 3 o'clock in the morning and waiting and they were sleeping and they knocked and knocked and knocked and finally woke them up at 3:30 because they had flights to catch. So I'm just saying, it happens.
I'll set a, a meeting up with you with Chief George Rhodes to go over that fire.
Okay.
If you, if you wish. You can talk to him right now.
Well.
What you're, what you're hearing and the facts are two different things.
Well, I'd like to hear the facts.
Talk to the chief. All right, any other public comments? Okay, not hearing any. Move right along to the consent agenda. And we need to add, we missed putting in the checks, check run between meetings, which I have in front of you. Like to make a motion to add this to the consent agenda.
Make a motion to add the checks in between meetings?
Okay.
Support.
Mark and Maureen. Motion to support. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of amending the consent agenda, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. Now I'll entertain a motion for the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda consisting of the board meeting minutes from October 17, 2022, communication, building department resignation of Tracy Dome and the check reports. The board approved 10, 17, 22 and payroll and the checks in between meetings.
I have a second.
Support.
Okay.
Can I ask about, in the, in the one that was added, CPI excavating DPW material? That's the same person that's with, looking at the machine. What, what is this material?
Well, we're, we're talking, it's actually an agenda item. It's for brass fittings.
Brass fittings. We were just talking, saying we don't really hire them, so, but we're looking at their skids deer, right?
Yep.
$8,000 in brass fittings?
Yep.
For?
We'll talk about it. It's a?
Oh, it's down here?
Yep, it's agenda. It's 1F.
But we're approving it, okay?
All right, anything else? Hearing nothing. All approve, all?
Approving it before?
Yeah, approve the consent agenda. Say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, passes. Fire chiefs report.
Good evening. Fire chiefs report for October. During the month of October, I attended two meetings. The St. Clair Flats Association Meeting and the Fire Chiefs, St. Clair County Fire Chiefs Association. General business was discussed. We also did pump testing on Engine 1, 2, Engine 1, 2, Engine 3, Tango 3 and Water Tender 1 in October. All the vehicles passed and the safety inspections were done on all the fire department vehicles in the past. October was also fire prevention month. Fire department conducted classes at the Elginak Child Care Center, also Millside Elementary and Algonquin Elementary. We had about 450 kids that participated in it. And we gave handouts and gave a little class on fire prevention. Wanted to thank Sergeant Carr, firefighters Devroy and Lee. They put on classes. They did an excellent job. We also did a safety day, fire safety day at Channelview Mobile Home Community. We gave handouts out. We also set up the smoke trailer and for the children there. We also did a standby at the Pearl Beach Lions for the bonfire.
Any questions for George? Thanks, chief.
Thank you.
Okay, moving right along to new business. Building department, new hire. Part-time building clerk has to replace Tracy Dome. It's Amber Nelson. Guys, wanna come on up? We have to embarrass you, Amber. This is Amber. I know Cindy Valentine and, and Cindy Babish interviewed some people and Amber was the one they recommended. And we actually brought her in as an attempt just a couple days this week to see how she worked and fit in with the office. And she was, did, it's been doing a great job and fitting in well. So, how you like it so far?
I like it a lot.
You came back.
I did.
We weren't sure. We were, especially in election week, it gets crazy around here. So, yeah, I'd entertain a motion that we hire Amber as our part-time building clerk.
I'll make a motion that we hire Amber Nelson to be our part-time building clerk.
Support.
Okay, a motion to support. Any more discussion or questions?
Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Live close by?
Thank you.
Do you live close by?
Oh, yes.
Great.
Oh, yeah.
That's great.
All right, no more discussion. All in favor of hiring Amber as our part-time building clerk, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Congratulations, Amber.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Welcome aboard. All right, next we have planning commission appointments. Robert Muslin and Chris Daggy. And I wrote, they've, Robert Muslin has been on the planning commission, I think this is his third term? Yeah, and he's doing well. And then Chris Daggy, this is his first reappointment. And he actually went to the planning commission or the planning class and is a certified citizen planner that was up in Port Huron not too long ago. And I'd like to nominate for both of them to be reappointed to the planning commission.
I'd like to make a motion to nominate Robert Muslin and Chris Daggy to the planning commission, effective date November 15, 2022.
I have a second.
I'll second it.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have the treasurer bringing his approval for depositories. I think what, you have a new place you wanna deposit money. We're starting to make some interest. I mean, one good thing is the interest rates go up.
Little bit.
Yeah, and I think that's where the, go ahead.
So as part, as part of our approved investment policy, we have a list of approved financial institutions. So I have included Consumers Credit Union and then along with their Bauer score of five stars, which means that these institutions are recommended by Bauer. So I want to get them on our list so that I can talk to them about certificates of deposit. So I will make a motion to approve the updated, approved depository list.
Which ones are new on that?
Just the one that's got the, just Consumers Credit Union.
Okay, Consumers Credit.
Yeah, it's got a little asterisk next to it. And I, I removed Chemical Bank.
Okay. You got support from Mark?
Support.
Support.
Okay, all in favor of approving the depositories, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have interest payment on our Colony Waterline bond. Entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the Colony Waterline interest-only payment in the amount of $4,587.63 coming from line item 854-990-995.
Support.
We have motion and support. Any discussion on that?
Budgeted items.
Yep. Under $10,000? Okay, we're good. Okay, all in favor of that, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Next, we have our approve the fit testing for the fire department to make sure the masks, is that right, George? Fit on all the safety, the personal protection gears for our firemen.
It's for the N95s, the AB 3000s, and also they get a TV test. It's annually.
Yeah, this budget is annual.
I will make a motion to approve the $4,141 on line item 206-000-962.00 for the Miosha standard annual fit testing on department respirators.
Support.
Okay. Do you need some oxygen down there?
Need a respirer.
Yeah. All right, we have motion and support. Can you repeat that motion? No, I'm just kidding.
I can do it backwards.
Okay. All right. Motion and support on the fit test, testing. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Okay, next we have bolt purchase of brass fittings. And it's from CPI. Go ahead, Lance.
These are fittings that I've had on order for almost nine months now. And I did include a list of the fittings. These are the fittings that I've been out of. I've been unable to do some services up until the point of when I was able to purchase these. And as you can see by the list, we're saving $3,400 just by buying them through him because he's going out of business. So it's kind of a win-win situation for the township.
And we got them, we got them now. We, we had a waitlist to get this stuff and who knows when we're getting it?
I still have no idea when we're gonna get them.
Right. I, I know somebody that ordered fire hydrants. And they said it's gonna be at least seventy weeks.
Wow.
For a fire hydrant. So if you know anyone that has a project that requires fire hydrants.
I, I have pit covers that we ordered in April and they're talking sometime next spring. There is no date.
So I have one little question. So the eight thousand dollars spending for these brass fittings, what was the original purchase price and what we're trying to get?
Eleven, eleven thousand four hundred forty-two dollars is what I could purchase these for.
Okay, so, so eight thousand dollars is going to give us a huge discount plus replenishing your bench rack?
Correct.
Perfect, thank you.
It's all stuff we need and use.
And it's budgeted and we already paid for it.
Well, had to.
Yeah, because you had to strike when the iron's hot, right? Okay.
So, any motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'm already out of breath.
All right. I'll do this one. I make the motion that we approve the bulk purchase brass fittings for eight thousand dollars from line item five nine one seven four six.
Support.
Motion to support, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. All right, next we have purchase of a skid steer. When Lance was down there, I asked him, hey, do they have a skid steer? Because we didn't include it this year's budget, but we actually had it the past three years before that to buy one. We never pulled the trigger on it just because they're always, I don't know, personally, I thought it was a little more money than what we wanted to spend at the time. And then we were looking, you know, I think we had in the budget about sixty thousand. He has his skid steer, it says it's in great shape. It's seven hundred hours on it. And we can get it for a cost of fifty thousand dollars. And Lance has comparables, basically at the same amount of, or same shape, same amount of hours, they're all around sixty thousand. A new one is eighty thousand. So we're saving thirty thousand on that seven hundred hours usage. And tell them what we, we use this for and what we replace.
The use of the vehicle is pretty much for whatever. I mean, you can use it for plowing snow. There's all kinds of attachments we can get for it, too, after the fact, that wouldn't be that expensive. You can buy a broom form, you can buy a plow for the front of them. You can buy a pavement breaker for the front of them. There's just so many, the usage is just unlimited.
Numerous applications.
Yes, yes, sir.
And for construction or water lane breaks or emergency.
Water lane breaks, clean up. I mean, it's, it's good for almost everything.
I understand right now you're using something that the fire department has as far as a four-wheel drive vehicle.
We have George's four-wheel drive, what is that, a Gator or mule? A Kawasaki mule.
Yeah, that's, that's.
And we've, I've put it together a couple of times. It's just not made for what we use it for.
For plowing snow, you've been using it, right?
Yes.
Yeah, we plow a lot of snow. We, we, the DDA pays our water department to plow all our sidewalks in the township. Plus our parks, our parking lots. And this would be really handy on the ice court.
Yes, it would.
I've, I've seen these in use and they're indispensable.
Oh, yeah, it's, it's a machine that can be used for almost anything.
So we're gonna have to buy the plow for it because it doesn't have that?
It's got a bucket on the front we can use.
Yeah, that's, that's the plow.
I mean, the other thing is, and Artie can address this, his brother has one at the ferry. And what they use for doing snow is a broom. Doesn't tear the grass up. You put a hydraulic broom on the front of it, it gets rid of the snow and doesn't make a big mess, which is one real nice thing.
And for that, I would try to run that through the DDA.
Yeah, definitely.
Because they would be, that's what it would be doing is plowing the DDA sidewalks and stuff, so.
Yep.
You have a meeting Wednesday, so. It's coming. I mean, winter's coming quick, right?
Nah, it's gonna stay this way all.
So if we approve the purchase, what, what line item do we use or DVD or?
Yeah, we'd probably, it'd be capital, capital expenditure or five thousand. And we probably have to follow this next meeting with a budget amendment.
Well, you're saying you're gonna take it from four different budgets, the water budget, the sewer budget, the parks and the DDA budget. You think, thinking equal part, I mean, I'm just concerned, you know, about the full-time firefighters, you know, how I feel about that, that if we're gonna amend the budget.
This has no effect whatsoever on our fire department. Water, there, there is enterprise fund.
But if we're gonna amend the budget to get, to put money here and there, I mean, I'm, I'm more about the safety on the island, but I know we need this machine.
Water and sewer cannot contribute funds to the fire department.
It's against the law. It's enterprise fund. They're separate. Same as police, same as fire. Separate.
Okay. Parks, DDA.
And like I say, it's, I'm not sure what, about the DDA still loose a number. So we'll adjust it once we, we know what they'll do.
I'm just disappointed we didn't already, you know, keep it in the budget like we had previous years, but.
Well, I didn't anticipate finding one for fifty thousand.
It's a good deal, right?
Yeah, that's, okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of the skid steer for fifty thousand dollars. Out of capital expenses, water, sewer, parks and DDA.
Support.
We got a support, any more discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote. Sir Artie, yes. Maureen?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Chrissy?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes.
Thank you.
Get ahold of him tomorrow and. Make her happen. All right, so that's all we have for our meeting. Board member comments. Chrissy?
We are prepping the winter tax rule, so we had quite a few people calling, looking for their tax bills, but they won't go out until November twenty-ninth. The first day that they're payable is December first.
Okay, November twenty-ninth.
So we'll know tomorrow.
Yeah.
After tomorrow.
Okay, Mark?
The Planning Commission meeting scheduled for November the ninth has been canceled. And the next meeting is December the fifteenth.
Whatever it is, okay.
Close, close enough.
Sounds good.
That's good, thank you.
Well, congratulations to Amber and welcome. And everybody get out and vote tomorrow, if you haven't voted already.
That's right. Done?
Yes.
Okay, yep, vote tomorrow. I did put it online, I do this every election. If anyone needs a ride to the polls, get ahold of me. I'll either drive it myself or make arrangements, you get picked up and taken to the polls. It's very important. And I've got a lot of, a lot of questions on the ballot. It's gonna be interesting election, so. Other than that, I'll.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Yep. Sounds good. All in favor, actually, we don't even have to vote on that one, believe it or not. Okay, thanks for coming, everybody.